Good evening. Welcome to the July 25, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Mr. Ryan Nast, a pastoral intern with Woodside Bible Church, with us this evening. If you would please stand for the invocation and then I'll make a special introduction regarding our Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening.
Dear Jesus, thank you for allowing us all to meet here tonight at the Troy City Council Meeting. God, I pray that you would watch over this meeting and help those in charge to make the right decisions for the city. I pray that the leaders would look to you, God, in making these decisions, no matter how easy or hard they are. Lord, I pray for your wisdom to help them make the right choices for the city of Troy. I pray that what is decided upon tonight will make this city stronger. Lord, I also pray for our country with the upcoming presidential election in November. I pray for the wisdom of the citizens in this country in electing a leader that is worth following. I pray that no matter what happens this year, God, in Troy and around the world, that you would help us to remember that you are in control and that our only hope comes from Jesus, your Son. I pray all of this, and in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Now I have the pleasure of introducing Brownie Troop, 75784, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could get them to come up to the front here. Are we ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its saints, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. They just went from being Daisy Troop to being Brownies. Congratulations, girls. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Here.
All present, our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations, and we have two this evening. C1, on behalf of the city of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program for the months of March and April 2016, Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will present a check. And if I could get Cindy to come forward and explain who that check is going to, it would be great. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I'd like to introduce Elise Wasorik from the March of Dimes. The employees chose the March of Dimes for March and April to give our money to, so we have $710 to present, and Elise is going to tell you a little bit about the March of Dimes.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank everyone that participated, all of the employees that made a contribution to the March of Dimes this year. The March of Dimes mission is to ensure that all babies are born healthy. We do this by fighting primarily premature birth, and in fact, one in 10 families in our community here in Oakland County will be impacted by premature birth. And that's something that can stay with the child well into adulthood. A lot of times through research that the March of Dimes has already done, the baby's born early and they get to go home just a few days or a few weeks later with no symptoms of their prematurity. But oftentimes, they may have cognitive disabilities, blindness, asthma, there's a whole list of things that can affect them throughout their entire life. Here in Oakland County, through our March for Babies campaign this year, we raised over $450,000, and much of that money will stay here in our community. The March of Dimes for Southeast Michigan has invested over $2 million in research at University of Michigan and Wayne State University, and we've also donated about $85,000 in grants to programs that are helping moms get the care and education that they need to have a healthy pregnancy. So thank you all very much for your donation, and if you're ever interested in looking for more ways to help babies, please visit us at marchforbabies.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is C2, which is a certificate of recognition to Athens High School students, Griffin Olus, Michael Fraser, Mustafa Rashid, and Zen Wani. And if I could meet them at the podium, I would like to make a presentation to them on behalf of City Council. It's really a privilege for me to be here tonight to present these certificates of recognition. I had the privilege, along with Councilman Baker, to go to Athens High School when C-SPAN brought their bus and came down to the school to recognize these four great students. So, on behalf of the Troy City Council, I would like to present a proclamation and recognition of Troy School District students Griffin Olus, Michael Fraser, Mustafa Rashid, and Zen Wani, first-place West Division winners of C-SPAN Film Contest. And I'd like to read this into the record and congratulate all of you this evening. Whereas Griffin Olus, Michael Fraser, Mustafa Rashid, and Zen Wani entered C-SPAN's annual Student Video Documentary Competition, Student Cam, this spring as seniors at Athens High School and took first place in the West Region for their film, "The 1%: Scarcity of Fresh Water, the Great Lakes, and the Flint Water Crisis." And whereas, this year, students used video cameras to address the theme, "Road to the White House: What's the Issue You Most Want Candidates to Discuss During the 2016 Presidential Campaign?" In response, C-SPAN received a record 2,887 video submissions from almost 6,000 students in 45 states, as well as Washington DC, the Virgin Islands, Taiwan, and the United Arab's. And whereas, the goal of Student Cam is that every project is collaborative, have community connections, and be something the students are passionate about and might not otherwise be able to pursue during the school day. And whereas, Griffin, Michael, Mustafa, and Zen decided to explore the topic of the scarcity of fresh water with an emphasis on the Great Lakes. The title of their film, "The 1%: Explores the Dangerous Future and Present of Our Nature's Shining Jewel and Most Precious Natural Resource," of course, our Great Lakes. And whereas, production for the film took the students to Lansing to interview state congressmen and the director of Clean Water Action Project, and to the University of Michigan to interview a professor of earth science. They also recorded interviews with Senators Debbie Stabenow and Carl Levin, drove to Flint to cover the water crisis, and included footage of Lake Huron and Lake Michigan. So now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Griffin Olus, Michael Fraser, Mustafa Rashid, and Zen Wani for being awarded first place in the 2016 C-SPAN Annual Student Video Documentary Competition, Student Cam. And be it further resolved, the Detroit City Council and all the Troy residents congratulate Griffin, Michael, Mustafa, and Zen for their outstanding work in bringing attention to a very important topic, and encourage everyone to watch their amazing documentary at studentcam.org/winnersons16. This is presented to each one of you this evening, the 25th day of July 2016, and signed by myself, all members of City Council. I want to share my congratulations on behalf of the city and the City Council. You make us all look good, and thanks for all the work that you did to make us look good. So congratulations, guys. We're going to show the video here in a minute or so, but I just want to recognize these four students because they're all on their way to college. And Mustafa, you're going to Wayne State University. Zen, you're going to Wayne State University. Griffin, you're going to Columbia College in Chicago. And Michael, you're going to Central Michigan University. Congratulations on those honors in representing our great school at Athens. So thank you. So without further ado, I do want to get a picture first.
So do one of you guys have to do an intro to set this up? Do one of them have to do an intro to set us up?
That would probably be good. Who wants to speak on behalf of the group? Here we go.
Well, thank you, Mayor Slater, and thank you, all members of the City Council. We really feel appreciated for recognizing our efforts and, you know, caring about a very, very important situation in our country that, you know, goes off in unnoticed. The film is about, of course, the Great Lakes, and, you know, when we wanted to do the competition, we wanted to cover a topic that wasn't, you know, widely known, and we came to realize that fresh water is actually very, very scarce. As Senator Levin put it, "It's going to be the great battleground of the future." As we went on in our research, we found that Flint, the situation in Flint, which was a local issue that time, really represented what we wanted to cover in the documentary. And as time went on, Flint became a national issue, and we were proud that our film, we hope at least contributed to that effort to make it a national issue, and now something that is being dealt with. So again, thank you, everyone, for your appreciation, and we hope you enjoy our documentary. Thank you.
Did you bring popcorn?
This month we showcase our Student Cam winners, C-SPAN's annual video documentary competition for middle and high school students. This year's theme is Road to the White House, and students were asked, "What issues do you want presidential candidates to discuss?" Our first prize high school west winners are from Troy, Michigan. Griffin Olus, Michael Fraser, and Zen Wani, 12th graders at Troy High School, won presidential candidates to discuss the scarcity of fresh water, the Great Lakes, and the Flint Water Crisis in their video titled, "The 1%."
Today, Americans are drowning in overly debated issues such as immigration, Medicare, terrorism, leaked emails. Although these are important topics, the issue that will affect the most Americans is the issue of the 1%.
1%.
1%.
1%.
1%.
No, not that 1%, this 1%, the shining blue jewel of the United States, the Great Lakes.
Truly one of the unique resources in the world. It's the largest freshwater resource in the world. There's nothing like it. Every one of us have a responsibility to do what we can to protect those waters.
Really, in the US, we are very lucky. We have the best drinking water in the world. In a way, I think that that's allowed us to become a bit complacent about our drinking water. We take it for granted. About 70% of our fresh water is right here.
Put it at the scale and help visualizing just how significant the Great Lakes are, here is a graphic of 100 water bottles, representing 100% of the Earth's entire surface. 71% of the entire Earth is covered in water. Of all that water, only 3% of it is fresh. Of that 3% of fresh water, 2/3 of it is trapped in ice, in glaciers. That means 1% of all the water on Earth is fresh and accessible.
Fresh water will be the great battleground of the future. It's not going to be a war over oil, or over fuel, or energy.
It's incredibly important that we do protect the Great Lakes, it being, you know, in my opinion, in the opinion of Clean Water Action, really the most precious natural resource we have, not only in Michigan, but in the country, and arguably worldwide.
Besides the Great Lakes being such a treasured resource, it still faces many threats and complications. On the coast of Lake Huron, construction of a nuclear waste dump is underway. Located less than a mile from the water, 200,000 cubic meters of nuclear waste is being buried in porous limestone. That's right next to the most important freshwater ecosystem in the world.
The notion that we are going to store nuclear waste anywhere near the Great Lakes just makes like a sense.
That's a fact. Water moves, and water moves downhill. And so ideally, anything you bury underground, you're going to keep away from water. We haven't been successful with storing nuclear waste in this country. We haven't done it yet. We don't know how well we can do at this. Wanting to put this repository right next to 70% of the world's fresh water, that is cause for concern, and I would like to see a lot more dialogue on it.
The Great Lakes are a huge portion of the world's freshwater supply, so anything that could potentially contaminate those waters is something we need to be paying attention to, and really thinking about long and hard before we move forward with doing something like that. There are not nearly enough politicians in the state of Michigan right now that put their money where their mouth is when it comes to protecting the environment. They'll pull it out on the stump, say, "Oh, we need to protect our Great Lakes." But if you check their voting records, you know, more than half of our state House and state Senate right now have 0% voting records when it comes to the environment.
It's a very tragic example of what happens when you don't have a government that is very, very active in protecting its people.
Protection. The people of Flint, Michigan needed protection. Instead, they were poisoned, and their children were affected. The common public began to catch on to the atrocities occurring in Flint, but almost an entire year after the incident occurred. Since the filming of this documentary began, we have been following the water contamination situation in Flint, Michigan, where it has now exploded onto the national scene. It has received coverage from multiple news sources and even emergency action for President Barack Obama.
We still don't have drinkable water in the city of Flint. Up to 10,000 children have been poisoned with lead, all because the state of Michigan decided that it was less expensive to use untreated Flint River water rather than river or water from the Great Lakes.
We used to make jokes about like the things you would find there, like you would dump a dead body in the Flint River. It sounds terrible, but that's the reputation it has.
They decided to hook Flint back up to the good water, but only pay for half the hookup. That said it all to me.
To solve that immediate problem of reconnecting to Detroit water, because they disconnected from the Detroit water, and because of the chemicals they used to purify the Flint River water, it really caused a ton of problems with their old lead piping. The water was terrific right at the treatment plant, but the minute you put it in those old pipes, those chemicals were drawing that lead right out of the pipe.
A person made a very short-sighted decision, supposedly to save money, to disconnect from the world's best water source, the Great Lakes, to go to the Flint River, which even General Motors stopped using because it was corroding their auto parts. They caused the damage, will only pay for half of the reconnection.
The scariest part is the level of irreversible damage, because it's not just, "Oh, well, we'll send a doctor and it's fine." You know what I mean? So now it's, "Well, the damage has been done. What do we do?"
Drinkable water here in the United States is not something that, you know, Americans should not have access to that. So that's of great concern to us. There's going to be devastating long-term impacts for children that have been exposed to lead in the Flint area.
People don't really pay attention to the issues until the very last moment, when they're forced to make a decision because they trust the people that they elect, and hopefully they can.
People of Flint were relying on their government, and it let them down. It failed them.
They're actively trying to make people know less when it's the opposite, where people should know everything.
The scarcity of fresh water in the world is a vital situation that needs to be addressed. It is an enormous situation that is seldom mentioned amongst politicians. The United States cannot afford to have the Great Lakes poisoned as the water was in Flint, Michigan. Let's not forget that over 60% of the human body is composed of water. That puts the responsibility on each and every one of us to protect our freshwater resources.
It's easier to ignore things, you know, but then the second people started being loud about it, which is how you get things done. Now it's on the national news. Now there's protest. It's not a superhero movie, and it's up to people to do something.
As all Americans, rather, as all humans consume water, the issue of fresh water demands the input and attention of our presidential candidates. Water is essential for the endurance of America and the world.
To watch all of the prize-winning documentaries in this year's Student Cam competition, visit This month we showcase our Student Cam winners, C-SPAN's annual video documentary competition for middle and high school students. This year's theme is Road to the White House.
Thanks again to Griffin, Michael, Fraser, Mustafa, and Zen. Thank you again. There are no carryover items this evening, no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. There are no mayor or board appointments or City Council appointments. I do have one nomination that I'd like to place this evening for the Global Troy Advisory Committee. I would like to move Ruba Saman to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2019. Support. By the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we nominate Ruba Saman to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2019. Discussion? I'm nominating Ms. Saman because she's the executive director at American Syria-Arab Cultural Association. It's located in the city of Troy. I did meet her at Morris Elementary when we were over there during the refugee family night, so I think she'd be a great addition. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to her, and thank you to her for volunteering to be on our committee. Any City Council nominations this evening? Seeing as there are no City Council nominations, we will move to I3, which is a closed session request. Somebody would like to move that resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I'd like to move I3. Be it resolved that City Troy shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268 as printed.
Support. By Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
No.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull on a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? I know there were some questions this evening, and they are on the yellow sheet on the table this evening, so most of the questions, I assume, were answered. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. There is a memorandum and future council agenda item, K2A is a memorandum for the master plan update, approval of the draft of the master plan. I would encourage everyone to read that and be prepared for a public hearing. Any comments on that this evening? Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Ryan Johnson, who would like to speak this evening. I don't see my...oh, there it is. Three-minute is our time limit for public comment. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you move that microphone up, please? Thank you.
Sure. So my wife and I and our family are new residents of the city of Troy. We bought a house in March, and so shortly thereafter, we stumbled upon an issue regarding the assessment on that house. It was a foreclosed house, and we were kind of taken surprised by the tax assessment. First, mostly because we were ignorant of the fact that we didn't know the thing was going to uncap this year. We knew it would uncap next year and be assessed based on its market value. So as soon as we found out that, we went to the city assessor, tried to have discussion regarding this, and we were pretty much told that there was no recourse. That then actually proved to be true because there was a July Board of Review. Now there are technical requirements to get on the July Board of Review. It's not just for standard assessing. There has to be clerical error, or what they call a mutual mistake of fact, which is basically both the assessor and the homeowner both believe something to be true that wasn't true. And that's a basis for a presentation at that time. We made the argument that because it's a foreclosure, and because the foreclosed owner at the time, there was, you know, a credit union, small one, really had no clue what kind of condition the house was in. They even fired their first real estate agent that was representing them, and then went with the second one ultimately that was with them by the time we bought the house. And the assessor, neither one of them really had an idea what the condition of this house was. So I've attempted to get myself educated on the tax laws in this regard since then. And so as my understanding is, you know, because of the sheer volume of houses that the city has to attempt to assess every year, basically there's an aggregate data of house sales from the last two years, and that comes up with a per-square-foot average for a given range of homes, and that is just automatically applied as the assessment to a house. And the problem with that assessing practice is, and especially when it comes to foreclosures, is that it doesn't take the condition of the property into consideration at all. So that was kind of what shocked us, because we had bought a real fixer-upper that was in fairly poor condition, and saw that our assessment was a good 25% over the market condition of the house. We attempted to present at the July Board of Review for that. I believe our case was dismissed on a technical clause that probably shouldn't have been employed. So we will be appealing that to the next level at this point. But there's a number of things in the process that I don't think we have time within these three minutes to address today, but there's a number of things I wanted to bring to the board's attention throughout this process. I think there are some things that are lacking in the process that aren't getting the residents their due process.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think we're all in receipt of your email that explained your position. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council response. I know Mr. LaCary did give us a response. Do council want to hear from Mr. LaCary this evening? Do council want to hear from Mr. LaCary this evening?
I just want to mention that I did speak with Mr. Johnson. It was a day after I flew into town, and it was before I read Nino's response, and I told him that if he came and talked to us, we might be able to speaker city attorney after, and he could explain it to him a little bit more, you know, with us together.
Any other comment from council? Councilman Henderson?
Might be helpful if Mr. LaCary maybe gives a snapshot of maybe quickly the steps that it takes if you want to appeal.
Yeah, I thought Mr. LaCary's response back to us was pretty clear, so if you want to just kind of summarize that to us, you know, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Mr. Johnson been apprised of his right to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. The July Board of Review did deny him an appeal at that venue, based on legal terms, not a technicality, but the greater issues that he was allowed to appeal at the July Board of Review, so he can go forward. And this case will move up to the state level at that point in time, so he has the right to appeal further, and then he can bring these other issues that he's brought to your attention to the tribunal's attention. But most of those were not issues that the July Board could act on.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Nino?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
This body is not in a position to make changes to how the assessing process works, correct?
That is correct. There's a disconnect there between those duties that I perform for you and other duties that I perform locally. This is a state matter, and the city council has no jurisdiction to make any correction to a local assessment.
Also?
You know, that doesn't mean we don't care, or that we're not paying attention, but the process is something that will have to unfold through the channels. There's a reason for that separation, and, you know, know that we hear you, we understand what you're saying, and we have to follow that process as well. So we wish you the best.
I appreciate that.
Good luck at the state level. Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening. So next is council comments. If I could, I'd like to speak first, if that's okay this evening, because I'm very concerned about the safety of law enforcement officers today. The recent ambushing of police has a retired police officer tears me apart. I've had the privilege of speaking at the Police Memorial Day here in Troy for the past four years, and the last thing I want to see is another name on our list. There's evidence recently that there are persons in our immediate area that are talking about murdering police officers. There is a recent incident in Troy where a diversion tactic was used within the last These cowards are learning from each other. So I'm not going to talk about my perceptions of why these murders are happening, but my main concern tonight is to see if I can get consensus from this council to offer our support to our police department during this very difficult time for them. I actually feel it's incumbent upon council to ask the city manager, Frank Kishnik, if additional funding is needed during this most difficult time, and to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our officers have a fighting chance here today. If we need to increase our overtime funding to raise minimums for the officers, two officer cars, capital funds for safety measures, I could go on and on, but I don't want to be the one to do that. So I just want to make it clear that the assistance is here from city council if I can get consensus today, tonight. And I'd like to ask the city manager if he would meet with the chief, if I get consensus to offer our support, and if funds are needed, I think we're here, ready, willing, and able to assist. If I could get consensus or someone else to speak this evening on this, I'd appreciate it. Looks like I have consensus, and Mr. Kishnik, if you could do that for us, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Next, Councilwoman Hoderick.
I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, just mention that the annual food fight is occurring here in Troy. It's our 22nd annual food fight to tackle childhood hunger, and food can be dropped off at three locations in Troy here, Troy City Hall, Troy Public Library, the Troy Community Center. I stopped at my cupboard on the way in and picked up a non-perishable item to drop off. Area businesses and organizations, individuals all around the area participate in this, and last year, the food fight had a record-setting year, bringing in more than 27,000 pounds of food and raising more than $42,000. You know, each day, Gleaners provides approximately 70,000 meals to those in need by distributing more than 34 million pounds of food to over 510 partners in the area to get to folks who are hungry. And there is hunger in our midst. It's incredible to think that that's the case in a community that is so thriving, visibly thriving, but it is the case all around us. Donations can also be made online to help increase that food fight total. It's at www.gcfb.org, city of Troy, and I just hope folks will keep this in mind, and as you're out and about in the community, before you run out, maybe stop by your cupboard, pick something up, and drop it off. You have until August 1st to do it. Thanks.
Any other comments from council? Any comments from council regarding the reports in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. So we will take a break, and we will meet in closed session. Thank you for coming this evening, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.